President.
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 At this point, I'd like to call Valerie Shulley to the microphone up here.
Councilman Lupino?
Yes.
If I may, just for the record, I didn't speak to Councilman Arcato Diaz one day today. He was in his exams.
Yeah, he didn't report to the clerk or the council president.
He also, we have Councilman Psychos also sent an email out. He's not been on this today. He has his.
Councilman Psychos did contact me, yes.
Can you get it? Can we get it? You can always see it. Hello? Are they in?
Please stand and Valerie Shulley will now lead us. A fixture at our chamber for many meetings. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Is the motion a second? Any discussion? There is no discussion. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Public acknowledgements and commendations. Are there any public acknowledgements or commendations?
I have none.
None from the council or the?
Council President. Council President, do we want to mention Cranston East Lee Club?
Yes. I'm glad you mentioned that. Through the efforts of a lot of dedicated and helpful people throughout the city, Cranston East was awarded a $10,000 grant or outright. You're shaking your head. Grant? What was it?
They were awarded $10,000 for the Lee, given the contest, which is not just for Lee but the entire music program. They were only one of 72 schools in the entire country to be awarded money out of 492 schools to enter. So it's, you know, it's a big deal. They got $10,000 for a two-minute video. And Mark Lawzies beyond the revenue. The money will go to a great cause, the music department at Cranston East.
And everyone should be proud. I know I voted about 15 times myself, so. As many times as they would let me, I did, so. Thank you, Councilman, for mentioning that.
And I'm a Cranston West grad, too, so.
All right, I voted a couple of times, too. Okay, moving on. Under public hearings, any members of the public who'd like to speak on a docketed item? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Is there a sign-up sheet, by the way?
There is, but I don't think anybody signed up.
Thank you, Council President, members of the council. My name is John Bolton, attorney for Chapel Associates. Regarding ordinance number 10-11-2 on your agenda this evening out of the ordinance committee, I just wanted to mention that this ordinance has received the recommendation of the planning staff and the city planner. On December 6th, the planning board unanimously recommended the ordinance as well as the ordinance committee on December 9th. The applicant is here this evening if you had any questions for him, but we ask for your passage of this ordinance this evening. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public? Once? Twice? Okay, we'll move on to resolutions. I don't believe there's any docketed resolutions this evening. So move on to Finance Committee. Vice President Palatier.
Thank you, Council President. The committee met and we approved several items on the agenda. The first one was the resolution authorizing real estate and tangible tax abatements.
And that was approved?
Motion approved.
Second?
Second.
Motion a second? Any discussion? There being no discussion, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Resolution authorizing motor vehicle tax abatements.
Motion approved.
Second.
The motion a second? Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Tax interest waiver approvals as recommended by the city treasurer.
Motion to approve.
Second. Is the motion a second? Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Tax interest waiver denials as recommended by the city treasurer.
Were there any?
There was none.
I didn't see any. There's none in here.
I don't think there was any, Council President.
Okay, if there are none, then. There's two?
All right, there was two, Council President.
Motion, I'll entertain a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion a second? Any discussion? There being none, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. The representatives from Braver?
Motion to move this down the counter?
Second. Okay, we'll move that, we'll come back to that. The other one was the municipal investment sharing for state award, the fidelity. We're going to discuss that briefly.
Yeah.
The state of Rhode Island has developed what they call a state investment commission, and it has to do with Ocean State Investment Pool, which is called OSIP. And the state investment commission announced, I believe it was November 29th, the approval of fidelity to be the investment.
Excuse me, could you please use the microphone because this is being recorded? And I know people from, people from the public call me and say, "I can't hear what's going on from some of the people," so please speak into the microphone. Thank you.
And what they're doing is they're basically going to be investing the assets of municipalities and the state as a pool of money so we could get a better rate of interest and return on our investment. As you know, the interest rates right now are pretty low and nonexistent, and they felt that if we could pool our money together, we could earn a better rate of return. There's approximately 44 out of 50 states that operate some form of this type of investment vehicle, and the fact that fidelity was awarded, the next step is that they're going to be working out some of the issues and concerns of the committee, and more than likely, the, it'll begin sometime in the first quarter of 2012. As I get further information, I will pass that on to the council and let you know how it's going to work from what we currently do in our investment policy.
And who will be advising that? Will it come through the council? Will it come through the bond council? How will the?
No, I'll be advising the council.
Prior to any transfer of any funds or investments in these?
If that's what you choose, I mean, as you know now, when we invest money on a day-to-day basis, it's the policy of myself and the treasurer to invest into local banks, but with the state of Rhode Island, we should have the ability to do that in a similar manner, but I can email you and let you know on a day-to-day basis what we intend to do.
I don't think, I don't think it's necessary. I think it's just, you know, maybe on a quarterly basis or.
Okay.
Keep us, at least keep the council informed.
I mean, whatever the council would prefer, I will adhere to, but I think it's a good mechanism, and most of the cities and towns are going to be taking advantage of this.
Council Vice President Palatier.
Thank you, Council President. Just to ask Mr. Strom. Mr. Strom, we did get recently, or last year, we gave you the authorization to make the transfers and the investments.
Yes.
But is, do you still report that to the audit, to the Finance Committee? Wasn't it, I think we?
We were doing that, and I could, I'll be very frank with you. The person that was providing me the information has been out for about eight weeks, so I have not done that in the last couple of months. But prior to that, I believe we started, I think it was a request from Councilman Navarro, and we started to implement that, and we were providing that information. I can tell you right now that the rates are so terrible that we're trying to invest as quickly and as much as possible, but the rate of return is, it's going to be difficult to even make budget this year, even that we reduced it sizably. I mean, the banks are giving such deplorable rates of return. But I will start to generate that information again.
Just an update for the Finance Committee.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you. Councilman Santa Maria.
I don't know if I missed this, um, through the, through the Council President, Bob, did fidelity get the award from the state?
Yes.
So they, they're doing all 39 cities and towns?
Yes. Whoever's a part of this pool, whoever elects to come into this pool, fidelity will be representing this investment vehicle.
You don't happen to know who the other people were in the bid process, do you?
Excuse me?
Were there any other people in the bid process, or was it just fidelity?
Just the state of Rhode Island. State of Rhode Island went out for the bid.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Navarro?
Mr. Strom, what's going to be the mechanism as far as if we want to elect to be in this pool? Is it going to be a resolution from the mayor, or how's this, how's this, does the council have to allow, vote or give authorization to be part of this pool?
No, I, I, I think based on the charter that Mr. Councilman Palatier mentioned, that it gives the ability to the treasurer and myself to invest in various investment vehicles, similar to what we do with banks. This is just another mechanism of getting a better rate of return. So it's very conservative. It's not anything where we're investing overseas or parts of the country. It's through the state of Rhode Island, so we can be assured that what we're investing into is going to be, you know, supported by the state.
Okay, so, so basically, it's the, it's going to be handled through the investment commission?
Yes.
So, so the fidelity, this fidelity group or fidelity will be another source that we can decide to put some money into as far as?
Well, this is only, not for the pension fund, you know that. This is strictly for investments. We invest, like into Citizens, Webster Bank. As money comes in from tax collection, we put money aside in, to invest. If the rate of return was, like, say, 0.2 percent, this should generate a better rate of return. Say it's the current rate, it should be maybe 0.4 percent. Whatever the, whatever the current banks give us for a rate of return, this should far exceed it. And, and what the treasurer of the state was trying to do is, because rates being so low, have the ability to help cities and towns get more, more of a rate of return on their investment than they're currently getting. So this is all through the treasurer's office.
Okay, it's been through the treasurer's, okay. It makes sense. I just was wanting to find out if there'd have to be some type of investment policy adopted by the investment commission mirroring whatever the investment policy is going to be for the state, because the state must have put together an investment policy.
Yes.
Fidelity to bid on, so that would be information that would be required at the investment commission to know exactly the exposure and what type of investments that
I, I can provide that information for you. It's still in its infancy stage. When I get more information from what I hear in the first quarter of '12, I will provide that to the council.
But you've answered my, my first question, which was, what's the mechanism involved? But now I understand how this is all going to, going to be handled, so I'm good with that. Thanks.
Recall on Braver and to give their report. Let the record show that Councilman Arcato is here.
Councilman Lupino, maybe we can go to the next order of business until they, they get prepared. It seems like they just walked in and are they, unless they're ready.
Yeah, I think, I think we're ready. My name is James Prescott. I'm a partner at Braver. With me tonight is Erica Lowbury. She's a manager of the job here in Cranston, which I think most of you have met her before at our last meeting. You've had these statements, I'm not sure how long. Did you get drafts this afternoon or get drafts before? When did you? At any rate, we, we talked about this at the Finance Committee hearing about a week and a half ago, and since that time, we've added the transmittal letter, which comes from the administration, in the front, and it kind of explains a narrative of what the financials are and how they, and then the results over the last year or so. I can just kind of walk through some of the highlights that I've touched on previously, but if you have any questions at any time, just feel free to ask. I would go to the back of the report first.
Mr. Prescott, before you go on.
Yes.
At the, at the committee level, what was presented was a draft, you know, saying this is the actual and final and approved.
This is final to the extent that we are still waiting for a legal letter from some of the lawyers that are dealing with the city. We've been trying to follow up on that, but we don't expect any changes from the, we've talked to some of the attorneys and the administration's talked to them to try to get them to respond. We're required to send out requests to all lawyers or legal, for legal matters that might affect the financial statements, and so that, we have to have that documentation in, in our files before we can actually put a date on. We expect this not to change, and we will date it Thursday, and it'll be final from there, but this is, this is a final, final draft, I would say. In the back of the report, we have these schedules that are detailing the various funds, and what I would do is just point out a couple of things. The school department, which is on page, starts on page 87, at least that's the schools' unrestricted schedule, it's a budget to actual comparison of the schools. And as you can see, we have the original budget, the final budget, which didn't change, the actual numbers, which is the numbers we audit, and the variances, as you can see. They had a $435,000 deficit for the year operational, but you should also know that they set aside some money for the health insurance, which shows up actually on page 103, the school department's internal service fund. Now, in the past, this has been part of their general fund, and what they've done is they set up this internal service fund to better track the expenses for health for the school department, and the expense in the general fund is actually the rate that their co-op charges them during the year, and then over here, this $23 million is the actual expenditures that they had on health. So when you, when you're thinking of the school, you kind of got, got to kind of look at this number and add it to the deficit in the school. So instead, so this 2.2 million gets added to the half million. Now, what, this year, I understand, they're actually operating in a surplus on the health side, so they hope to recoup a lot of this unexpected expenses they had during this year. So that's kind of the summary of the school, the budget actual. Page 88 is your general fund, which, again, we're summarizing the original budget, the final budget, the actual numbers, and the variances. What I point out to you is that you had, after all said and done, you had a positive surplus of $21,000, which is almost a perfect break even. There were some things I'll just also mention, is that when you prepared the budget for these, this year, June of 2011, you had a transfer of fund balance that you counted as revenue in your budget, and what, because things turned out kind of positively, the administration decided not to actually make that transfer. And you'll see that number up here under appropriation of accumulated surplus. You see it in the budget line item as a revenue source. Under actual, it's zero.
What page? 88?
Page 88. 86. I can't read. I need better glasses. The numbers are small. Okay. So you can read this for yourself. You can see where you had some, some positive variances there. The next area, just go back to the front of the report or near the front of the report, which shows your balance sheet for the general fund, and it also shows the school department's balance sheet. And I talked about this the last time we were here. I just wanted to kind of go over that again under fund balance. So on page 29 is the list of assets of the general fund, list of assets in the school department and other governmentals, the liabilities, and then the fund balances of these funds. So under your general fund, you have a $21 million cumulative surplus. Now, that's from day one of the city's operations. The important number here is the unassigned number, the $10,006. These reserve, they're kind of what I would characterize as reserves of non-spendable 3.2 million, restricted of 6.3, and committed of 1.3. Those are all part of that $21 million, and most of that is related to reserves set up because of the school. So because the school is operating in a deficit position, you kind of reserve your general fund, because overall, you have to really kind of combine the two, because you're really one entity when all is said and done. So that's what those reserves are. Your free surplus, so to speak, is the $10 million, and that's what rating agencies would be interested in. Just briefly, some of the other funds. Your sewer fund is very healthy, producing about a 1.6. I can't read this. 1.6 million, 1.1, yes, $1.6 million surplus in sewer, and that's been the case for a few years, you're generating surplus in the sewer. A lot of talk about pensions, the pension trust fund, which is on page 38. At least this year anyways, you've had some, what I would call dramatic appreciation on the assets of over, almost $10 million because of the stock market recovered so much. Our report, we were asked primarily, well, our only real duty here is to render an opinion on the financial statements. And our opinion is on page nine. What this basically says is that we look at the financial statements prepared by the administration, the administration's responsibility with your supervision, and we come to a conclusion that they are fairly stated. We don't audit every transaction. We don't count nickels and dimes. We set up tests, the test controls that are involved in the city handling finances, and we're able to render an opinion that we think the statements are fairly stated. We also do a, what they call a single audit, which is an exam, compliance examination of federal funds. There are special tests we go through to make sure you're in compliance with the laws and rules and regulations, and we do other tests depending on what the grant tells us to do with the federal government. A133 testing. We do have 114 there, which kind of briefly, I just really kind of summarized this 114, but I want to, oh, do you have what we call the 114 letter?
The letter that you guys.
The letter? Yep.
I don't know if I have one, but I can talk about it. I guess I don't have one. But that really explains. This explains our duties, and we are required to communicate this to you as a governing board, what we, what we do. It talks about what I just mentioned. We come to reasonable assurance on the financial statements. We have to communicate whether or not we have difficulties in performing the audit. We didn't have any such difficulties. It talks about estimates that are used in a financial statements, capital assets and depreciation, doubtful accounts, those things that you should be aware of. They're not exact numbers. We had some corrected journal entries. Some are directly related to a change in accounting method that was required by the Gatsby, and the others were receivable in the sewer department, which really doesn't affect the overall health or, or condition of the sewer. We had no disagreements with management. Management made request, made no separate request from us. They didn't opinion shop, as far as we know. We have no indication of that, and we have no other major things that we should be communicating to you, other than this letter in our audit. So that's a thumbnail sketch of a 125-page document. Any questions?
Okay, Council Vice President Palatier first. And Councilman Navarro?
Thank you, Council President. I'll defer to Council Navarro, because I was just going to actually call on the opinion of the.
We're asking questions of.
Right, so I defer to Council.
Mr. Prescott.
Thank you. Mr. Jim, I have a question for you, specifically on page 29, and you had mentioned specific, on the unassigned, on the unassigned line.
Yes.
On that unassigned line, what is the most important number on that balance sheet that Moody looks at?
Unassigned? They'll look at that $10 million in general fund.
The general fund?
Right. The $10 million deficit in the school is being really accounted for on the left in these restrictions that we have. So your actual fund balance is $21 million, but because of the school's deficit, so to speak, not directly, but so to speak, we, we have these unspendable restricted, which is primarily related to the contract you have, the deficit reduction clause or contract you have with the, with the school, and then there's some committed funds of encumbrances there.
So when, when I, when I go all the way to the right of the page and it says total government funds, it shows a negative.
It shows a negative.
Why wouldn't Moody's look at that number?
Because they, they don't necessarily, it's more like a memo column than thing on the, the total on the right. It's not.
That's the total, right?
It's not, yes. It totals all these various kind of funds, but when, I think Moody's looks at your general fund and what's restricted in that, and how much you have available going forward, and the $10,006.90 is what you have available going forward.
So that total fund balance, that Moody's would not look at that?
Well, I can't say they wouldn't look at it, but it's not, it's not the important figure. You asked what the important figure was. It's the $10 million surplus that you have remaining. Now, that necessarily, maybe, maybe Bob could mention, I mean, he has the conversations with Moody's at various times, I would think, but that is not necessarily, I mean, for an entity this size, that's not a big number, at least in my opinion. It could be much larger.
All right, and then just one other, one other note. And then just one other, one other note, because I think it's important, you had mentioned, and you specifically touched on it with the schools, was the, well, before I move on to that, I just, I looked at last year's audit that you did, and the, on that same page twenty-nine, I mean, it shows the breakdown of the unassigned, back, last year you used undesignedated, but there, the total fund balance matched the general fund of 11 million, 11 million eight.
Uh.
So.
Under unassigned.
There was a change in the way you did the, the actual balance sheet last year.
There, there's new.
Right, but we still had the schools, we still had the deficit, I mean, all that was still.
Right.
Part of the equation.
Yes, yes.
But the total, on this, on this, on the one from last year, shows the amount, the 11 million eight, on the total, on the total governmental fund balance.
I'd have to look at it, too. I can get back to you if you want to talk, I can't.
Just, I'm just, again, for the Moody's, for the bond rating, I just want to make sure that, that, you know, the way the, the accounting's been done, that, that it doesn't, you know, affect us in any way, because of the, because that's the most important thing, the unassigned, that's the unrestricted, that's our surplus.
Right.
So I just want to make sure that Moody's reads this correctly.
Yep.
Because when I'm, when you're telling me that 10 million of it is, is for the schools or restricted accounts, I mean, I wonder if they're going to read it the same way.
I think they, they will read it the same way. But I think it's, the 10 million is in these numbers above, the non-spendable, which is what, the number that we determine the school didn't have the ability to repay in a current period, which is 12 months. The restricted is mainly the contract between the school and the city to reduce their deficit, which gives $1 million a year, I believe it is. And then committed has to do, a lot has to do with the school's encumbrances.
And lastly, just, and again, I wanted to move on to the, the page 103, which you directly mentioned, which was the, does the school set up an internal service fund?
Yes.
Now, there, it shows a negative of 2.2 million.
Yes.
So, if they didn't set up that internal fund, would that negative be?
That would be in their general fund.
Would be reflected in the, in their.
In their general fund.
You gave me page, what, 103 or something like that?
Well, 103 is the.
No, 103 has a 2.2, but on page eighty-seven, where you show their balance, you show their budget, they show a negative of 435,000.
That's correct, yes.
So, because they created that internal service fund, it shows separately, but technically, it's, it's like.
Well, if you were, if you were to compare last year's and this year's, you'd have to kind of, you know, look at that and, and see that that was the kind of expenditure they had. If we had treated it, if they had treated it without setting up that side fund this year, if they had not set up the side fund, that loss would be in here. Now, conversely, last year, they had a surplus, I mean, when I talk about last year, I mean, 2010, they had a 1-point-something surplus, didn't they, cash? Yeah. They had a 1.4 million surplus. And in fact, if you look at that internal service fund, you'll see how that, that actually reduced the 2-point-something million.
Right, the 1.1, 1.19, yeah, the 1.197, yeah, okay, I see that.
So they had a surplus sitting with the co-op that they deal.
So, so basically, they, they've had a lot of claims, is that what it is, to be at negative 2.2 million?
Right. They're operating, operating, not including the previous year's surplus, was negative 3.4. And so, the difference between the, what they call the working rate and the actual claims are, are, is this difference here. The 20 million is the working rate, the 23.8 was the actual claims.
Okay.
And that's how they distinguish it. They got, now, they have solid, generally accepted accounting principle reasons for setting this up, because the school, Department of Ed has required the schools, all schools, to have this new method of reporting, with a chart of accounts that details a lot of these things, and has made it practically impossible for them to allocate in their general fund these, these expenses. Hence, this, that was one of the reasons they set up this side fund.
So this is new for this year, for the school department?
It's new, yes, yes.
All right. No, thank you, Mr., thank you, Jim.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Can we go back to page twenty-nine? I, can you just explain that one more time? You said, "We had a $20 million surplus, but yet 10 million was unspendable," right? That's the word you used?
10 million, what page again?
Oh, back to twenty-nine.
I think it's eighty-six.
No, it's not unspendable, it's unassigned.
Okay.
In fact, you could argue the opposite, it is spendable.
Right, so, now, carulo payment, repayment is in here, because.
Yes.
All right, so now, that's only 6.8, so where are you getting the 10 from? I think we only, they only owe us 6.8.
Carulo's not in the 10.6. Carulo's in the restricted.
Can you speak into the microphone? I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
You have a soft voice.
The 6.2 million for the carulo.
Yep.
Is included in your restricted fund balance, because by state law.
All right, there it is.
It's restricted.
Okay.
So, in, unassigned, it's just your remaining fund balance, it's not, you'd have to go through each fund, like, area to see what parts of the different areas of the general fund that made up that fund.
So that's just money that's sitting there, we can't touch, basically, like in a restricted receipt account, almost?
You mean the 6.3?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Well, we're saying you can't use it.
So you've taken the 21 million, less the 10, that's, why would I say the unspendable? What'd you say, what the word was?
Unassigned.
Unassigned, so that makes sort of $10 million rainy day fund, or whatever.
No, it's the other way around, the unassigned is your rainy day fund.
Okay, all right, I got you. Thank you.
Anyone else? Council Vice President Pelletier.
Thank you, Council President. Council President, I want to, just wanted to thank Mr. Prescott and Erica from Braver, as well as Mike Farina and Steve Warner, who assisted on the audit this whole past year. They did a fantabulous job. I just wanted to thank them all.
No, thank you.
And also, Council President, I'd like to refer to our own internal auditor, Steve Warner, in regards to the Braver report, give his opinion.
You thank those people, you mean, Mr. Prescott was present at all those meetings?
Mr. Prescott was, yes.
Oh, good, very good.
As well as Erica.
Erica, and we had people from the school, too. It was a big celebration.
So I just wanted to thank them, but also, I just wanted to hear from Mr. Warner.
Mr. Warner, I'm going to ask you to step over to the podium and use the microphone, please. State your name.
Stephen Warner, City Council Internal Auditor. I believe the statements are fairly represented. As Mr. Prescott noted, there were certain changes in accounting standards that primarily related to fund balance that changed the presentation slightly. I think the discussion tonight about the school internal service fund made a lot of sense, and I think the audit report shows that the city did a good job managing our side of the budget, and the deficit that ended up showing was because of the transfer of the $1 million from the police station that, where the sale didn't happen, that was an agreement, probably, I believe, two years ago, maybe three years ago now, but I think overall, it's a positive audit report.
Thank you, Mr. Warner.
Are we all set?
All set.
Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President Quinone. Just echo Councilmen Pelletier's thanks to the auditing firm, the Audit Committee. Also, I wanted to acknowledge the record strong of the administration, given everything that we're reading about cities and towns in Rhode Island and around the country, to have an audit report that is fairly solid, and it shows a fairly strong demand, city is a good thing, so definitely a commendation to the administration as well.
All set? Thank you, Mr. Prescott.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't expect a check too quick, but. Ordinance Committee, Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President. The Audit Committee passed two ordinances. The first is 10-11-2 ordinance in amendment of Chapter 17, Dakota of the City of Cranston, 2005, entitled zoning, change of zone on Old Avenue. It was passed 3 to 0. This deals with chapter view, I believe, entertain a motion for passage.
Motion approved.
Second.
There being no discussion, Plut, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council members.
Merry Christmas.
Next, order of business, Council President, was the resolution, resolution authorizing the appointment of a committee to develop the redistricting plan for the six wards of the city of Cranston, as amended in Committee 12, 8 to 11. This passed unanimously, 4 to 0. Council President, entertain a motion for passage, as amended.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved. Second.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Council Vice President.
Council President, I'd like to make an amendment to the amended resolution, that we actually return it to the way it was originally issued, allowing the Board of Canvases to handle the redistricting plan.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that in the form of a motion to.
Council President, we still have a motion and a second on the floor for the original.
Right, he's making an amendment to that.
All right, okay.
Make an amendment to the original, to the amendment, yeah. No problem.
There's a, there's a motion and a second.
Point of order.
Wait a minute, I haven't made the motion yet.
Did you, did you continue, you said you wanted to go back to the.
Point of order, Councilman?
Correct.
What's your point of order, Councilman?
I just want to, through our parliament, parliamentarian, just to, he's making an amendment, he wants to make an amendment to the original resolution, so.
No, he didn't say that. He said he wanted to make an amendment and bring it back to the original resolution as presented.
So that's not, I mean, is that something that, that, wouldn't the prevailing side want to undo that amendment?
Council President? Council President?
There's no change into what he's.
So, Emilio, so if we didn't vote it, it would go back to the original one in the first place?
Well, I don't know if you can amend something that you wanted to bring back to the original form, so we'd have to unamend it, or say, you know, someone from the, you were from the prevailing side, you'd want to make a motion to reconsider.
Proper.
But I, I. It would be a motion to, it'd be a motion to, you'd want to make a motion to reconsider, reconsider that vote that took place in committee.
Okay, the parliamentarian says the motion to amend is proper, so there's a motion by Councilman Pelletier. Just so we understand, what, what you intend is that on line 26, 27, 28, and 29, it says, "Now therefore, be it resolved that there be, there is hereby created a redistricting committee consisting of three regular members of the Board of Canvases." And as amended in committee, it says, "And also, two members of the City Council appointed by the majority leader, and one council member appointed by the minority leader."
Correct.
And it's your amendment that's saying that you want to take out those lines on 27, 28, and 29, and go back to three regular members of the Board of Canvases, the way it was originally presented?
That is correct.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Councilman Navarro.
Well, I'm, I'm a little disappointed with Councilman Pelletier and his amendment, only because he did vote for it in committee, and he made no objection whatsoever, and he didn't, he did not make any argument, as a matter of fact, he was for the amendment, so I am a little bit disappointed that he, he's, he wants to bring it back to the original form, when he voted for it in committee, to, to go with the, the amendment that I had put forth. So, with that said, and I'm sure he'll let us know why, I just want to just say that the reason that this motion, this, this resolution was amended, was to add council members on the committee, and, and basically, it was an old, a past resolution, the one that was done during the past, the last redistricting, and I had pulled the, that ordinance, I mean, that resolution, and that included three council members, and it seems that that's the way it's, it's been done, and it was, and it's good to have the council members in that kind of a work session, to find out and get all the information from the Board of Canvases. So, that was my, my reasoning for, for making that amendment, because the way the original, the original resolution was just, just the Board of Canvassing, and the past resolutions that, that the city has used in order to redistrict was all I wanted, to make sure that there was representation, so that at the full council, everyone knew and was up to speed on all the different scenarios, or, or, you know, what the final redistricting lines were going to be, so. With that said, maybe Councilman Pelletier's going to bring forth some reasoning to put it back, but that was my only, my only concern, was to have council members, just like any committee, be there in, in a work, in a work session type of a committee, in order to bring it to the full council.
Councilwoman Luciano.
I'll defer to him first, he's the answer.
Council Vice President.
Thank you, Council President. Council Navarro, you're, you're absolutely right, I did originally support this, and I, I do like the council having oversight over a lot of the committees, I do agree with that. However, what I don't want is to give the illusion or the impression to the voters, especially that are going to be broken up into the redistricting, that the council will have political influence over their votes. So, by keeping the council out of it, and allowing the Board of Canvases, which is exactly what we appointed them to do, it gives them the control, it gives them the, the decision-making power to redistrict in a fair and equitable way for all parties. So, by keeping us out of it, it just prevents any perception of, of wrongdoing by this council, but I do agree with you, when you did put it forward, that it does give, it would, it would actually give us oversight, but I just don't want to have the perception of trying to, to rig the voting districts, and it's, look, I mean, look at, prime example, look what happened in the news recently with Cicilline, where he's accused of swaying the districts to, to favor him, so, and I just don't want that type of illusion to be brought upon us, so that's why I'm having a reconsideration of my original vote.
Councilwoman.
I will be supporting Council President Pelletier's amendment, Vice President, his, his amendment, first of all, because I think that having a council person serving on this committee is unethical. I don't think that we should be involved in redistricting, because it can be self-serving, and I think that you're going to get into things with, with the Ethics Commission, and that's not, we don't need that. We're supposed to, just as Council President said at the inauguration, you run as a Democrat, you run as a Republican, but you rule as a council person, that's what we're supposed to do, but I think in the interest of giving everybody in the city of Cranston a fair voice, we need to stay out of it.
Councilwoman Favica.
Thank you, Council President. I'm, I'm going to echo Councilwoman Luciano's sentiments, as well as Councilman Pelletier. I, I think what swayed me was the, the issue for Mr. Cicilline, with regard to him having some influence over his own district, and I think the same could be said for us as ward councilmen, not necessarily as the citywides, because they're really, the redistricting doesn't affect them at all, but as far as the ward councilmen, I think that we would have a problem and a perception of some kind of impropriety or some kind of influence, although I do like expanding the board to more than, than just, I think there's only three on the Board of Canvases, and I, I understand where Councilman Navarro was coming from, but in seeing what happened with the national level, basically, with the council, with Representative Cicilline, I think I cannot support the original provision that Councilman Navarro had put forth.
Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President. Yeah, I too feel it's just, it gives a bad sense of perception if councilmembers serve on the redistricting committee. However, I understand Councilman Navarro's intent. Who better knows the parameters and the area of his or her district than those who serve? When I served in the General Assembly, redistricting is a major part, and the Assembly does contribute. We're asked about the ethnicity, we're asked about the area, the population movement. So state reps and state senators do play a role at the state redistrict. Who better knows the area, who's more knowledgeable than the incumbent public official? However, due to Providence Journal and the publicity that Congressman Cicilline and Landjevan had on the front page, I think it's the best interest of this body to allow the Board of Canvases to handle redistrict. So I'll be supporting Vice President Pelletier's amendment.
Anyone else? Councilman Navarro?
Thank you. Yeah, there's a few things that I just want to clarify that some of the council members had mentioned. Because this is, the lines that are going to be drawn, that are going to be, are going to be, are accepted by the full council. The councils are the ones that have the voting to make them what they're going to be. The Board of Canvases have no such powers. They just recommend, as well as the registrar. This is, these lines that are drawn and how it's all done with the different demographics, the population shifts, things of that nature, come forth, but we are the ones, council members, so, that are going to vote to adopt them. So we do play a part because it's not the Board of Canvases that are going to put forth this map, and we are not, we're going to be hands-off. And just to clarify, like our legal counsel to just, number one, you know, make us aware of that, or just verify that I'm correct in the sense that if any of those recommendations, we want to change them, we can do that at that city, at that council meeting when they come before us. And we can make changes, and someone mentioned it's unethical. Well, that's what's going to happen at the full council meeting regarding changes, that you might see something that you don't like on there, and Councilwoman Luciano can amend it, and so you're going to have direct input, actually directly impact, you're revoting on what's going to be accepted. So you are going to be adopting that, the way those lines are drawn, and change them the way you want them, if you'd like, and if the rest of the council goes with it, then... So I just want to make that clear because I don't want there to be smoke and mirrors here that the council has full part in exactly how these lines are going to be drawn, and if we're going to accept them. And I know there might be some, you know, people mention the political word here, it's going to be political. Well, I mean, the Board of Canvassing is a political appointment. You have two Democratic on the Board of Canvassing and one Republican. So, I mean, just the fact that the Board of Canvassing is our parties affiliated, it makes it a political, it's political. You know, so you have people involved drawing these lines that have political affiliations. So I just don't want someone to think that they'd be unethical, you know, the amendment that I chose to have councilmembers on there. I think that we as councilmembers need to bring forth to the full council some of the demographic changes. One of the things that's important, because someone just mentioned, oh, well, it's not going to be that big. It's only 2,000 population change. And my point was, well, just because it was 2,000, there could have been influx of about 15,000. The overall net was 2,000, but the demographics, the new 10,000 people that moved in, or the, could be different ethnic backgrounds and everything, and they're could be all around the city. So we have to look at the economics, the demographics. It's not just by population. And councilmembers that represent each ward knows exactly how their wards are changing and what the demographics is that are there, and who they have to represent, and what's important and what's at stake for those constituents. So, I mean, so when those lines are being drawn up and they're carving out a demographic that a councilperson represents, you want to have input and say, you know what, that's, you know, it's not just a population shift. There's, you know, six more Hispanics in that Edgewood community that I need to represent, or whoever... So, I mean, that all has to be taken into account. So I just, I want to take the whole thing of the political, and, you know, we have to make sure that we're representing the constituencies, the demographics that are there, and we have to have some input in that. So, you know, with that said, I'm very, I'm very torn because all it was, was an amendment to have council representation on a work level with the registrar, with the Board of Canvassing so that the demographic, the changes within each wards are being accounted for and done right. You know, not for anything, but our Board of, you know, the Board of Canvassing, I'd like to be part of that. But if there's an illusion here that there's going to be some kind of, you know, gerrymandering or whatever, self-serving, I mean, I don't, believe me, that's the last thing I want, is to have that kind of reflection. But if, I mean, if this council, or this municipal council right here feels that having councilmembers on there is going to be a black eye for us, I, you know, then I'm a little disappointed, but I mean, I'm not going to, it was in good intention, so I'll reserve my vote when the time comes, but that was the reason for it, not... So, I mean, Councilwoman Luciano then wouldn't be able to vote on the full council because you're going to be voting, you know, and if you feel it's unethical, then you probably have to recuse yourself because you're going to be voting exactly on the ward that, you know, on the areas that, you know, citywide. So I would have to, I just wanted to make that point.
Before I call on many more councilmen, I just want to make a couple of clarifications here. What Mr. Navarro said is inherently wrong. That the redistricting is going to be based on population only. They do not look at demographics. They are not supposed to look at demographics. It's population only. It's a division of the six wards of the city, and they cannot vary by more than 5% from ward to ward. So demographics absolutely, positively does not come into consideration. And for that reason, I think that's why we should just put it in the hands of the Board of Canvases. It will come here as a recommendation. From the recommendation, an ordinance will be drafted. The ordinance will go to the ordinance committee, as we do with any other ordinance, and then it will come before the full council. And at that time, if there are adjustments that you wish, that you want to consider, they can only be based on population. You cannot pinpoint ethnicity, economic conditions, or anything. So I believe what the councilman has made as an amendment is going to hold up. Councilman Donahue?
Actually, Councilman Santa Maria was before me. I'll defer.
Thanks, Jim. I'm just going to make a quick comment to allay everyone's concerns. In 2000, they had at least three public hearings, okay, to start off with. I urge all my colleagues to attend each one of them because we're part of the public and we can see what's going on. And then, as already been said, it's going to come before the full council. So the committee process has been done. If this passes, we'll let the Board of Canvases get the information that they're getting from the General Assembly. And I would urge, I don't know if it's in here, but I believe the last time they had at least three public hearings. And I would prefer that they be at night so everyone can attend. So I don't know if I want to make a friendly amendment to put that in, or if we can just ask them to make sure that the meetings are at night.
That's all part of the process, Councilman.
So to allay concerns, I think that'll solve all the problems of any gerrymandering or ethics violations. Thank you.
To be at the table making those decisions about what is going to be recommended to the council, even for nothing else than the perception that their self-interest in reelection may be playing a role. And I don't think that we, as public officials in the city, should even put ourselves in a position where there may be... I'm not sitting at the hall, by the way, and I've had conversations with Councilman Navarro, that that was his thinking. I think he was looking at the precedent of this committee and was trying to expand the group and put councilpeople in. But I think times have changed, and because we did it one way in the past, doesn't mean it was the right way or the best way. So I understand what he was coming from, but...
Anyone else? Councilman Aketa?
Thank you, Council President. And you're absolutely right. The redistricting is going to be based on population. However, the public isn't naive here, Council President. Realizes a lot of other areas that are involved in redistricting besides population. It's not on population, but as you and I know, different areas, different boroughs in the city are inhabited by different people, have different economic backgrounds. And all those things come into play at the State House and on the council level. So let's not be naive. I understand where Councilman Navarro is coming from, and he was basically being frank and aboveboard with the voters. Let's be frank here. Thank you.
All right, there being no other discussion. On the amendment, the clerk please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. And on the...
As amended.
On the resolution as amended.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Hold on a second. Stop.
You can't stop a vote. You can't stop a vote. Can't stop a vote. Point of order, you can't stop a vote. It's in the Roberts rules.
She wants a clarification on what we're voting on.
Council President, you can't stop a vote. Council President, you can't stop a vote.
Continue.
Councilman Aketa?
Yes.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Yes.
Councilman Favickia?
Yes.
Council President Pelletier?
Yes.
Councilman Zepina?
Yes. You can record the change of vote, Councilman.
Yeah, I would like to change my vote to yours.
Okay, let the record show that it was a nine, an eight. Moving on. Claims Committee, who's the vice chair of claims?
I am. Lisa Bradley for $65, tire damage.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion is second. Councilman, any discussion? There being none.
Yes.
Councilman Navarro?
Yes.
Councilman Aketa?
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes. Now we're up to public hearings. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak on any undocumented items? What do you want, vice? Election of city officials, Tax Policy Review Commission. I still have not received, Councilman, any interest. These are public appointments. Do we have his resume? Where are we? All right, we'll hold that for the next, we'll hold that for the... I'd like to see his qualifications.
Through the chair?
Yes.
Through the chair. That public appointment is not a vote by the council. That's a council president appointment.
Okay. So I'll wait for those to come by my desk. I still, again, I still need another, I know you appointed... But I need two, I need two public people. I need one, I need them officially. Juvenile Hearing Board.
Motion to approve Vincent Tocata.
If I could back up one second, I would like to recommend Mike Farina for the tax review policy.
I second that. All right, so they'll be on next month's, um, next month's docket?
We're on the juvenile hearing board.
All right, go ahead.
Vincent Tocata is going to be, is re- recommended as an appointment as a regular member to fill a full term. Any discussion? Motion approved.
Second.
No discussion? Council Vice President?
Yes, Council President, can I be added as sponsors on both Vincent Tocata and Lou Ritchie III?
You can be added as a co-sponsor, yes. No other discussion? Clerk, please take the roll on Vincent Tocata.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. The second one is Louis Ritchie III.
Motion approved.
He's going to be appointed to fulfill a term to be, that's going to be filled out. One of the, I talked to the judge, and he has someone who resigned, so he'll be fulfilling that term and then be, if he desires, reappointed at that point in time.
May I second, Council President, in a, under discussion?
Yes.
I would like...
Well, let's have a motion. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion is second. Discussion?
Thank you. I'd like to recommend Louis Ritchie III, his appointment, regular member. A lot of you already know him. He is an excellent candidate with over 32 years of service to the community in law enforcement. I think he'd be a great addition, and I ask for your support.
Maybe Mr. Ritchie will sponsor trips to the correctional facilities to show them what it's really like up there. There be, oh, sorry, Councilman Favickia.
Thank you, Council President. Just a quick note, just, and I ask Councilman Santa Maria, just so the public knows too, that these two appointments are replacing males. These are, they were male members of the committee. We're not changing any of the new female members that we appointed earlier. For the record.
Thank you for being politically correct. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Report of city officers. Are there any reports? No?
I have none. Through the chair, though, the council does need to take a vote to accept the audit report that was presented this evening.
Motion to approve.
It's motion to accept.
Motion to accept. All right, there's a motion to accept. Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Executive Communications.
Thank you, Council President. Under Executive Communications, Cranston Fire Lieutenant James Dauber has requested a one-year continuation of service. Lieutenant Dauber has met all the necessary requirements. We urge you to approve.
Is there a motion? Motion approved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion? There being none, clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Cranston Captain Stephen A. Callahan is reg... Cranston Captain Stephen A. Callahan has requested disability pension. Captain Callahan has met all the necessary requirements, and we urge you to approve.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second. Motion is second. Discussion? Counselman Palautea?
Thank you, Counsel President. Through the chair to Mr. Cordy. Mr. Cordy, this is the one that was held over a couple of months. Is there any implications to, to being approved now and being, when he originally filed for the application? Or is his retirement date going to be effective now or prior?
No, it'll be effective. I believe the actual date is the 16th of January, I'm sorry, December, what, four days ago, I guess. And the only real holdup was the fact that we had, through our cooking company, our outside contractor who evaluates these claims, did request an independent medical exam, and the independent medical exam did concur with these doctors. So that's why we are now bringing it forward.
Okay, thank you.
And last but not least, I would like to inform council that last week, specifically December 14th, we received communication.
Mr. Cordy, could you please use that microphone so the public can hear?
Not long enough. I'm doing the best I can, Councilman. December 14th, we received... Is that better?
Benvenise.
We received communication from Rhode Island Emergency Management regarding our Unified Hazard Mitigation Grant application, which basically is for the 37 homes that we were trying to acquire on Amanda Court and Perkins Avenue in 2011. Emergency Management informed us that 36 of those homes did not meet the necessary requirements from a benefit cost analysis. Now, there are some alternative measures that are available to us. It's a complicated issue. I don't really want to get into it tonight, but I did want council to understand that that initial application has been denied on all but one of those homes.
Jerry, Counselman Palautea, I don't think he heard that, and he has some homes that are affected by that.
Was that last part?
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm hearing this very well. Apparently, it's not coming across very well.
The 36 homes, of the 37 that were applied for, only one met the benefit cost analysis. These are the buyouts you're talking about?
These are the buyouts that cover both Amanda Court and Perkins Avenue. And again, there are some options that are available to us, but again, it's a very complicated issue. And what I'd like to do, with your permission, is to address this in more detail at the Flood Commission meeting on the 30th. In the meantime, we are notifying all of the applicants of the situation.
All right, Counsel President. Jerry, will you be at that, at the meeting on the 30th? I'd like to request your presence, because I know they're going to have questions.
Yes, sir, I will be there.
Thank you.
Are we doing anything with the hiring of special counsel? Did you have anything on that?
I'm sorry, I thought I said January 30th. Did I say 31st? 30th of January.
Yes, I believe it's the 30th of January.
I have no updates on special counsel.
And we had, on the, I have listed also some settled legal claims.
Just, Counselman Lapino, just on that, on that information Mr. Cordy just gave us, I just want to just ask him clarification on one of the items he mentioned regarding the denials. I know he said it at the Flood Commission, but Jerry, you were saying one was approved.
That's correct.
Out of, you know, that includes Perkins and Amanda.
Yes.
You mentioned that due to what reason?
I'm sorry, I was using acronyms. The benefit cost analysis, which is a very complex process that FEMA uses to determine whether or not the amount of damage that's done to these homes over the life of the home justifies taking that home out of the flood-prone areas. And again, without getting into too much detail, part of the handicap that we were dealing with here is a lot of these homes were built in the 1940s and 50s, and there was no real reporting mechanism for damages from floods until the mid 80s. So you see, they had that 40 years of really blank reporting capability, which worked against them. But as I said earlier, there are some mechanisms that are available to us that may still hold out some hope.
So, so, so basically, I mean, as I went to one of the meetings where everything was spelled out, and it seemed like everything was pretty clear-cut, what parameters needed to be met, and things of that nature. I, I mean, so, so, so given the fact, I mean, this cost analysis, I mean, we had no idea that, that this, I mean, that they weren't even going to qualify based on the cost. I mean, that's a pretty set number, and not to know or give these people the idea that, that they were, you know, that they might meet these cost analysis, or were they aware? I mean, I'm just, I feel really bad for these people. They're going to be very disappointed that they didn't meet this cost analysis basis, and we didn't know that or had an idea, at least let them know that chances are they might not meet it based on references of, like you just mentioned, of the past. So I'm just, I just want to get an understanding that, that this was just something that wasn't clear-cut when these people put their applications in.
We made it very clear-cut in all of our public meetings leading up to these applications that there were no guarantees. This was a grant request, and there's no way of knowing what the benefit cost analysis is going to be until we manage to accumulate all of the information and input it into FEMA's programs. Basically, all the cities is a conduit for this, and I don't think anybody's been misled. I'm sure anybody that's been at those public meetings remember me saying on multiple occasions, there are no guarantees. And secondly, they remember me saying this is a FEMA program, not a Cranston program. We were just the conduit. There's no way of knowing what the BCA is going to come out with until the information gets loaded into FEMA's computers. And I also made mention of the fact that we were struggling with BCA's at the last Flood Commission meeting, so this isn't the first time the issue has been raised.
The administration intimated this to me. I asked them to bring this over this evening without a lot of discussion, because they are already working on alternatives that might work in some cases. And Mr. Cordy is correct. They, he was very careful. Many of the meetings, several of the meetings, all the meetings I was at, said that these are not, these are not guarantees. So, and then without knowing or having the input from the actual homeowners and the expenses that are related, that there was no way to know the benefit cost analysis from the beginning. Counselman Palautea, just a brief question?
It's just a brief, just a brief statement to Mr. Cordy. Mr. Cordy, I just find it, it's mind-boggling that out of the 39 people that applied, it looked like to people down in, on Perkins Avenue and Amanda Court, that the federal government didn't see that there's going to be future floods, and that these, these same properties are going to be affected again. So the benefit cost analysis should clearly show that, that this is going to happen again, and they're going to keep paying, FEMA's going to keep paying for more flood damage. I mean, I just, it's just mind-boggling that the federal government can't see that. And they, and they haven't even taken steps to fix the problem.
Counsel President, if I could just address that very briefly without taking a lot of time, because that's a legitimate observation.
I'm just making a random statement, Mr. Cordy, I'm just...
Well, I think that deserves a response. Counsel President did allude to the fact that there are some other alternatives available to us. That is exactly one of those alternatives, is that the FEMA's benefit cost analysis process doesn't take every situation into consideration. And the things that it did not take into consideration that worked against us was the first thing I suggested, that these homes have been around since the 40s. FEMA Independent Assistance didn't come about until the mid 80s, so there's a 40-year gap of no information as far as the damages that these homes were suffering, which worked against them in this BCA process, okay? The second thing that works against them is the fact that the flood maps that we're working with from FEMA are still operating on 1984 data, okay? And if you were at the last Flood Commission meeting, I'm sure the Counselman Santa Maria will tell you that we saw a very interesting presentation from the National Weather Service that shows how the frequency and the velocity of these storms have increased by quantum amounts since the 80s. So that's part of what we're going to be basing the, our address to this denial on, because FEMA does allow us to use a creative method to address it if we can show where the BCA does not address our situation. But it's a long, complicated process.
Okay, I don't, I want to stop discussions because I want to, I don't want us to, to play with the open meetings law. I asked them to mention this, you know, very limited discussion, that it would be addressed at the, at the Flood Commission.
Could I, could I ask Chairman of the Commission, ask that he reach out to Senator Whitehouse and Senator Reed's office if he hasn't already done so?
They have been very closely involved with this process, and they're the ones that have made it possible for us to at least approach the, the refined benefit cost analysis process that we're going through right now.
I would, I would ask one, one more situation, that the, each individual of the 37, or 38, be notified with a simple language paragraph that explains why it's not going to happen, and that they, that they attend that Flood Commission meeting to, to hear what you have to say about a potential, another opportunity.
That is our plan, Counsel President.
Okay. Well, we need to take a roll call vote on the Callahan disability pension. Approved. It's been motioned and approved and seconded, and we just needed to, there was some discussion that we didn't take the roll, the roll call vote. So please take a roll call vote on that.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Okay. Under Council President Communications.
There's nothing.
I...
Blank.
Yes. But I, and executive privilege here for a second.
Open meeting?
For... For Mr. Lopez. Regarding the, the added press, that's the, the odor from the landfill has been in the, in the news.
Is this on the agenda, Dwight?
I would, I had asked that we have a...
Point of order? Point of order? Is this, am I mis, is it somewhere on here?
Yes. It's in my, it's in my prerogative to, to...
Oh, I, I, oh, okay. I just don't see it on here on the council.
Just as, just as, just as any other councilman can add, different items I would like to add.
Okay, I was looking for, for that. Okay. I just didn't see it.
Mr. Lopez, do, do we have any, anything back from my request for the Department of Health to address the odors? We had received, even the council, all the council and the public had received a letter from Mr. O'Connell outlining the steps. Councilman, Representative Uche has filed a commission. The Mayor Paul Sina and the Council of Johnston has filed a lawsuit. We have been patiently waiting here for some action. The initial meeting said that it was going to take well into December, if not the first of the year before we would see any relief, but others have acted beyond that. So is there anything that, that we should know from the Department of Health or the DEM as far as any hazards?
Thank you, Council President. As everyone is aware, there's been a flurry of activity regarding the landfill and the smell, and due to all of this activity happening within basically the last seven to 10 days, it's been difficult to get some answers from people. And due to the holidays, people being out, this, and so on and so forth. I do not have some new information for this meeting, but I, I envision that by the next council meeting, I will have some answers and hopefully something directly from the Department of Health. I'm working through the governor's office and the governor's constituent affairs person, my counterpart over there, to try to secure someone for us to deal with. But unfortunately, because of the way things have broken over the past 10 days, not just with the lawsuit by the Town of Johnston, but the increased media presence and media coverage of the story, it's been really difficult to try to get that particular information from that department. But we are, we are actively working to, you know, get as much information as we can.
Just to remind you, our next council meeting is, is a special meeting on Thursday, so this week. Is that what you're referring to? You'll have information by then?
No, Counsel President. I was envisioning either the next subcommittee meetings or possibly the next full council meeting. It kind of depends on what feedback I get from the state.
I would, I would ask on behalf of the council that, because of the seriousness of the, of the matter, that, that we not wait for the meeting to get updates, that we, we get them as an executive communication, either from the mayor or from yourself, as soon as any developments happen, so we can, we know how to deal with our constituents who are calling on it.
Absolutely, Counsel President. And just to further add, we, the volume of calls has remained steady to our office, and we are encouraging people to continue to call Rhode Island Resource Recovery, because keeping up the pressure on those people is really what's going to work. And, you know, we're dealing with the constituents frustrations, but really, the most important message I can get out to constituents is that they need to put the pressure on Rhode Island Resource Recovery, because they're the ones that are going to, you know, take action.
I think it's very important to mention to the public that when you do smell the smells, it's very, very important that you call in, because that's going to help them to monitor. It's going to, it's going to give them indicators of where it's traveling. You know, they'll, they're going to put in data as far as wind speed, wind direction, and how far away it's going. So it's very, very important to not just call your councilman and complain. That's important also, but please call Rhode Island Resource Recovery. They have a 24-hour line. If you can't get on the 24-hour line, you can call the next day and let them know that you, that you smelled it at such and such a time, and it's very, very important. I can't stress that enough. They're basing a lot of the, the data on those, those calls. Counselman Simeon?
Thank you, Counsel President. Carlos, have, have you told them how bad this is getting? I've got many calls, as you know, from Alpine Estates that it's literally in their house now.
I...
It's, you know, this has got to be a health issue. I don't care what DEM is saying. I mean, do they know? I, I just get the feeling they're blowing this off.
I've spoken...
It's taken longer than it should have. My patience is wearing very thin. I can still smell it in Niceville.
Counselman, I completely concur with your opinion that the smell is horrible, and I have dealt with the constituents at Alpine Estates, and I, I, quite honestly, I feel sorry for them, because they're living in beautiful homes, paying high property taxes, and their house smells like the dump. I've spoken directly to my...
They're not happy, and I'm not happy for them, because this is absolutely ridiculous. I mean, it's bordering on comical.
I totally agree with you. I've spoken directly with Mike O'Connell. I've had constituents from Alpine Estates call me. I had one constituent come to my office, and I conference called him and put him directly in touch with Mike O'Connell. And they are very aware of the trials and tribulations of the people in Alpine Estates and in other parts of the city. You know, they're, they're telling us that they're doing everything they can. DEM has been out there. DEM is on them. As you see in the news, there's been fines assessed, and there's going to be more penalties coming down the pike for those people. But I, I think, quite honestly, we are doing everything that we can do to try... honestly, we're doing everything that we can do to try to have at least Cranston's voice, Cranston's residents' voices heard in terms of this crisis.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Councilor Navarro?
Yeah, just, the administration is doing a great job trying, you know, addressing these issues, so, I mean, I know that they're going to get back to us with the additional information and give us an update, so I think we can probably move on, you know, the administration's on top of this, doing a good job with it, so.
Thanks, Councilman.
Councilmember Communications, Councilman Arquette.
I have three, Council President, if you could give me some indulgence here. The first, I think, was on last month's agenda, Sprague Mansion, and we did discuss that, it's been, it's in the process of being worked on, so I'd like to withdraw that. I'd like to add to Councilmember Communications, for next month, Cat and Zaro's Pizza on Park Avenue, they have a rubbish dumpster in the street, they have it in Old Park Avenue, and it shouldn't be on a city street. It's going to snow, I would assume, by February, and that's going to cause major problems, so I would like to hear the results by next month, whether that rubbish dumpster is going to be removed from city property or not.
A suggestion, Councilman, that maybe we should discuss that with Councilman Santa Maria and bring that before Safety Services. That would meet before the council and-
Well, I need to know what's going to happen to that dumpster before it snows, and I've, you know, been in contact with the administration, I've been in contact with the business, and it's been going on six weeks now, so we need to address that before the snow falls. And the next item on the agenda, I know we get an email pertaining to zoning board meetings and what's going to be heard in front of the zoning board, but what I've noticed my three years on the council, we don't get notifications of the results and the decisions that occur on the zoning board. So if we can get either within the council docket after they meet, as far as the results, or a webpage to go to, to basically find out their decisions, because I know they met earlier this week and there was something there, and I don't know the results, because I wouldn't, you know, I don't want to contact the zoning board and ask them things.
Would the clerk like to respond to that?
Try to keep my own domain. Council President, any response to that, do we get the results from the zoning board?
Would the clerk like to respond to that, please?
We do not receive them, the decisions, when they're written, are recorded in land records, it's a public record, but they're not forwarded to any particular-
Could there be a way for the clerk to communicate with the Chairwoman of the zoning board after the results transpire, to forward you some type of documentation where it could either occur on the docket or a website for us so we could ascertain what the decision was and what the vote was from the zoning board, that would be nice to know, thank you.
I'll look into that.
All set, Councilman, Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President, hurricane cleanup, I'd like to move that to January, administration gave me a detailed report, I still perusing it, but I'd like to keep it on the docket for January in case I have any questions, if that's possible.
Just, yeah, as long as you share any concerns that you have after reading the report with us.
One new item, as you know, Walmart on Plainfield Pike had originally applied for a 24/7, they were denied by Safety Services. A few of the neighbors brought up some issues other than the 24/7 application of trash and the lighting from the parking lot shining into their homes at two or three o'clock in the morning. This is supposed to be low-level lighting by the site plan review. Also, we've run into semis, trailers, and campers parked all over the Walmart lot, in front of it and over to the side when the abandoned buildings. I did, I talked to the police department, they did a research for me, evidently Walmart encourages this. On one website, they say that you can park in their lots if you're on a trip, et cetera, et cetera, if you want to sleep over. There's also another website that tells you you can't park at the Plainfield Pike location. So it depends on what website you get to first, but I'd like to ask the administration if they can send inspections over there and get the trucks and the vans and the trailers out. The police can't go on private property, but we should be talking to the property manager and citing them, they're not supposed to be there unless they want to get billed for a trailer park. We can start taxing their parking lot at that, assess it at that rate and start letting them pay a tax on that, so the administration could send inspections over and get back to me on that. Jerry Carlos?
Councilman, we're well aware of the complaints in regards to the Walmart and Plainfield Pike, the lighting has been looked at again, and it meets the planning requirements, the trash is issue, has been under control every time we've gone out there, there's also been complaints of rodents, we've had our rodent inspector out there, he can find the evidence of rodents. In regards to the overnight campers, we're still looking to see if there's any reason or way for us to legally prevent that, we're still working on that, and we will let you know as soon as we've resolved it.
So you're saying they can park in the lot, basically?
I don't know that yet, we're still researching whether or not that's, we can legally prevent them from doing that.
Richard, I got a couple of empty parking spaces in my house, I'd invite your relatives to come over with their campers for the next six months and park them there. If we can't deny that, I mean, that's absolutely ridiculous, I've never heard of that.
So that means-
It's a parking lot, it's not a campground, that's ridiculous. And how are we going to send inspections out there at three o'clock in the morning when the tractor trailers are parked there running? Do we have someone that works on that shift? Then we have to send the police, that's not acceptable. It's not an acceptable answer.
So will I get a report from the inspections? So I'm getting, you're going to give me a report from inspections, so basically, everything's dandy, it's okay to shine lights in a person's house at two o'clock in the morning, we can have a trailer park at Walmart-
If you're talking about the parking lot lights, it's pretty difficult for them to be shining them anywhere they want to, if you're talking about headlights on vehicles, that's an entirely different situation. I'm not sure what you're talking about, Councilman.
There's not supposed to be any vehicles in the back there.
So are you referring to vehicles or are you referring to parking lot lights? Because that's what you were referring to earlier.
I'm referring to the whole, the whole kit and caboodle, they set about the lights, they set about the trash, and they set about the-
Well, again, the parking lot lights have been addressed, they meet the requirements, we've had the building inspector out there multiple occasions for the trash complaints, for the rodent complaints, I don't know what more we can do, but continue to keep an eye on them. I had mentioned to you earlier, we are looking at the legalities of overnight parking of campers, I can't answer that question for you right now.
Council President, then I request that the possibility of bringing them before Safety Services for show cause?
Absolutely, absolutely, I see no reason, the parking lot lights are in the front where the parking lot is, and they're also in the back where the loading platform is, they're denied access to loading and unloading between the hours of 11:00 PM and 7:00 AM in the mornings, so there's no reason to have lights back there, other than lights on the building, they don't need the overhead lights, so if they wanted to be a good neighbor, they could turn those lights off, but obviously, they don't want to be a good neighbor, so I would encourage you to bring them before-
Thank you.
-a show cause hearing. They did not respond to multiple complaints last year for trash, their claim was that the adjoining property was not their property, and I argued with the manager that it's not their property, but it was their trash, it was their, it should have been their incentive to go and talk to the neighboring property owner or put up a fence to prevent the trash from going there, but they refused to pick it up. Subsequently, it's in all the buffer zone between the Walmart and the neighborhood now, and that's what they're complaining about, and I don't blame them. Anyone else with Communications, Council Vice President Pelletier?
Yes, Council President, I was wondering if I can get an update from Evan on the status of the illegal tie-ins in Town of Johnston and interjurisdictional agreement, or do we have to go through the Public Works Committee to have another executive session?
You could do that if you wanted, that'd be fine to have another executive session. The status of the interjurisdictional agreement is that we still don't have one, there appears to be a lack of willingness on the Town of Johnston to sign the amended interjurisdictional agreement worked on by our consultant and their now former Public Works Director. There are, of course, ongoing discussions between our attorneys and Rhode Island Resource Recovery concerning the exit agreement, and we're preparing for negotiations with, for that. So there are a lot of moving issues with respect to the sewer enterprise as a whole, and maybe an executive session would be best placed to handle the variety of different issues, so the whole puzzle can be looked at. But in terms of that one piece of the puzzle, no, you are correct.
And is it true that we're coming up on three years now, when I think Councilman Santa Maria and myself both agreed that we should be shutting off the water, how come we haven't, how come we haven't done that yet?
I think it was more like a year ago last Christmas.
Yeah.
It was about a year ago.
But the issue's been going on for three years.
Just a qualification on that.
Yeah.
It was about, over a year ago when we said shut the water off, but it was a year and a half before that when we had discussions about it.
Previous-
We had thought at that point in time, we had reached the end of our rope, and we said, let's shut it off, so it is, he's correct, when this all started, it's been about three years.
And also, I'd like to know the status of the $2 million bill that we sent them to, any word on that yet?
That is not to the Town of Johnston, that's to Rhode Island Resource Recovery, and that's part of the exit agreement negotiations.
All right, so if I could, Council President, make a recommendation to the Chair if we could add this to an executive session in Public Works?
I second that. Well, I think the problem without disclosing what happens is that in the executive sessions and Public Works, there's insufficient amount of time to really delve into the intricacies of the project because there are other committees on that night. I thought that we had spoken about gaining a bigger scope in executive session by having this particular meeting on a standalone night, so we wouldn't have to run into rushing into other committees, people have other responsibilities, and, you know, I have no objection to putting it on for a special night and getting all of our consultants in on a night to each give a presentation about where it stands. You know, you can barely explain the problem in an hour.
Point well taken, and as Chair of the Public Works Committee, what we'll do is we'll coordinate, have all the experts, everyone there, we'll designate a time that I designate that we can spend five, six, seven hours, because it's complex.
Of course.
So we'll, you know, make sure that everyone, we'll give everyone plenty of time to clear the calendar and we'll, you know, find a way to shut the spigot.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Councilman Navarro. Anyone else on the, Councilman Favickio?
Thank you, Council President, just to follow up on something that Councilman Santa Maria said, I'd like to also, I have some issues that with regard to inspection, minimum housing inspection, so I would wonder if I may ask that Mr. Pike will be asked to attend the next Safety Services session so that he can address the issues for Councilman Santa Maria and the whole, the process itself, because I'm working on some legislation that I think would be better if we ask some questions first.
Council President, that would be up to the administration if Mr. Pike will can attend, I would guess, but I think that's a good point that Councilman Favickio brings up, and I thank him for it.
Mr. Capuano or Mr. Corte, care to respond to that?
We'll take your request under advisement and notify you what we decide.
And I would note that I did speak to Mr. Rossin about, he suggested that that would be, should be a good request that I make, because before I introduced some legislation, he thought that there's some questions that I should get answered by Mr. Pike.
I will consult with Solisler.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the Communications? Old business, any old business? There being none, introduction of new business?
Councilman Lepino?
Yes.
Just on the new business, I just have a note in my packet, it seemed like I was just missing, I think I'm missing some of the new business, some pages, I just want to just make sure before we accept them in. Specifically, 12-11-5 radius maps, it just seems like I only got one sheet, I don't know if there's, I don't see a sponsor on it.
There is a second sheet, it must have, it must have dropped out with the copier, but there is a second sheet, the sponsors on that are the Council President, Councilman Stychos, and Councilman Santa Maria asked to be added to that.
All right, there's certain ones, if you can just let me know who the sponsors are, and I guess I'll get copies, you know, of the full of new business, but I just wanted to, I have an incomplete packet, I don't know if anybody else does, I just know mine seems to be missing some pages. There's one on the zoning board of review that says one of four, I only have one, so I just wanted to make sure. It was 12-11-3.
I missed any pages. He has a page. Yeah, they are there, it must have been when they were put through the copier, the pages must have stuck together and, because the packets come out of the copier, and we assumed they were all there. I'll send them out tomorrow. You would have received them in your email also, the one I sent to the business on Friday, all the pages would have been there. We have six new ordinances being introduced tonight, all six of these ordinances are being referred to the Ordinance Committee for hearing on January 12th. Proposed ordinance 12-11-1, an amendment of Chapter 17, zone change for 860 Reservoir Avenue, this is the former Bigfords property. Proposed ordinance 12-11-2, another zone change, this is for 45 to 51 Sakonosac Crossroad. We have a proposed ordinance 12-11-3, zoning board of review, hearing procedure reform. Proposed ordinance 12-11-4, this is another zoning ordinance regarding commercial accessory uses. Proposed ordinance 12-11-5, this is an amendment of Title V of the Code on Business Licenses, this is specifying that radius maps for notification of a butters are to be measured from the property line rather than from the building. Proposed ordinance 12-11-6, this is an amendment of Chapter 2, Administration and Personnel, this is repeal of a prior ordinance on classified service. We have one claim to be referred to the Claims Committee for hearing on January 9th from Attorney Creighton with regard to a claim, personal to reclaim for Mrs. Hausmann. We have the following resolutions, a resolution requesting that the Cranston School Department utilize custodians for trash collection to be referred to Public Works for hearing on January 12th. We have resolution authorizing and endorsing the application for Enterprise Zone redesignation under the Rhode Island Enterprise Zone Program to be referred to Finance Committee for hearing on January 12th. We have resolution authorizing a presentation before the Finance Committee of the City Council by the Berkshire Group and other similarly situated companies to assist in developing cost-saving strategies for the 2012-2013 budget process to be referred to the Finance Committee for hearing on January 12th. And that is all.
Motion to approve in second, the new business, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Uh, under miscellaneous business on the clerk's decks, before you go on, Maria, the, um, there are some openings on the zoning board of review, or, or some expired, or about to expire terms, and I have not heard from any of those members, whether they wish to seek reappointment.
We have, I have received notification from Councilman Navarro that, uh, one of them, and I will follow up with the other two. We'll help them for next month.
Yeah, I have not received anything on those, so please make sure I receive those. On the conservation easement?
Yes, Council President, on conservation easement, the status of this now is, it's merely waiting for the monies to be transferred from Washington to the NRCS locally, and they can close this project.
So we expect that in January?
I would like to hope so, because like I said, it's got all the stamps and, uh, green lights, so hopefully it'll be here in January.
And, uh, the other one was the municipal court, 2012 proposed session schedule. Do we have? Motion in second. All in favor? Uh, we have a special meeting on Thursday. It's an executive session dealing with, um, negotiations for upcoming labor unions. Uh, next scheduled meeting is going to be Monday, January 23rd, 2012. Like to take this moment to, uh, on behalf of the council, to wish all our administration, our staff, our workers, the clerics, um, and everyone from the public, um, a very happy and prosperous and sacred Christmas. Not ashamed to say that word, that it, uh, you have a Merry Christmas and a, uh, a safe and healthy New Year, and we will see you, uh, next year. I'll entertain a motion. Motion adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
You just put all of the, I, I object to the whole.